Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118, and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was rescheduled for Tuesday, January 7th. The Board will take formal action on agenda items. Mr. Mayor?
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recordings, and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roll call, please.
DeCaro?
Here.
DePrima?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Ellis Foster?
Here.
Lent?
Here.
Reed? Singh? Solakowski?
Here.
Callie?
Here.
Quorum exists.
Thank you. Can we please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Callie. This is the one time of the year that the Board Administrator acts as the Board President for about 10 minutes, so I am assuming that role now. The first item of business is to report to the public the results of the election, and those and the number of votes received by each elected official, and it's in order of the highest results first. Ms. Teresa Burns, she received 3,746 votes. Ms. Jill Callie received 3,525 votes. And Salvatore Giordano, he received 2,688 votes. Congratulations to all the winning Board members. At this point, I would like to invite Mrs. Burns up to the podium with her family and to take the oath of office, and then you're a Board member. Mrs. Callie?
I, Jill Callie, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Jill Callie, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of Member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law, or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all of the duties that office according, I'm sorry, of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Mr. Giordano?
I, Salvatore Giordano, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Salvatore Giordano, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of Member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law, or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, parents. So as the Chair and also as the Board Secretary, we will do a roll call. Burns?
Here.
Callie?
Here.
DeCaro?
Here.
DePrima?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Giordano?
Here.
Lent?
Here.
Solakowski?
Here.
Quorum exists. Next, we will move on to hearing of the residents. If anybody would like to make any comments, please find your way up to the podium for those comments. Okay, so since there are no comments, we will move on to district policy. And these are basically the rules that we must follow to be a Board Officer. The Board of Education shall organize by electing one of its members as President and another as a Vice President. This election shall take place at the annual reorganization meeting pursuant to NJSA 18A: 15-1. These procedures for the election for Board Officers are as follows, and this is the reorganization meeting. For the Board President, number one, at the annual reorganization meeting, the Board Secretary, serving as interim Chair, shall call for nominations for the Board President. Any member, number two, any member may place a member's name in nomination. Number three, a second is not required for the nomination of a candidate for President. Number four, a member who has been nominated may decline nomination. Number five, the Board Secretary and the Board Attorney shall record the names of all the nominees for the Board President. When the Board, number six, when the Board members have been given an opportunity to make nominations for the Board President, the Board Secretary shall close the nominations. Number seven, the Board Secretary shall then conduct a roll call vote on nominees in the order in which they were nominated. Nominees who have declined nomination shall not be included in the roll call. A Board Member may only have one vote in support of one candidate. Number nine, the first candidate to receive votes from a simple majority of the Board Members present will be elected to the office, and the Board President election process shall conclude with no further roll calls. Number 10, in the event of a tie between two or more nominees, a second runoff election shall be conducted between the candidates receiving the highest number of votes. Number 11, in the event of such a tie, the Board Secretary shall conduct a runoff election in which each Board Member may only vote once in favor of the remaining candidates. For the Board Vice President, number one, after the President is elected and assumes the chairmanship of the meeting, the President shall call for nominations for the Vice President. Number two, any member may place a member's name in nomination. Number three, a second, again, is not required for nomination of a candidate for Vice President. Number four, a member who has been nominated may decline the nomination. Number five, the Board Secretary and the Board Attorney shall record the names of all nominees for the Vice President. Number six, when Board Members have been given an opportunity to make nominations for Vice President, the Board President shall close the nominations. Number seven, the Board President shall then conduct a roll call vote on nominees in order in which they were nominated. Nominees who have declined nomination shall not be included in the roll call. Number eight, a Board Member may only vote in support of one candidate. Number nine, the first candidate to receive votes from a simple majority of the Board Members present will be elected to the office, and the Board Vice President election process shall conclude with no further roll calls. Number 10, in the event of a tie between two or more nominees, a second runoff election shall be conducted between the candidates receiving the highest number of votes. And number 11, in the event of such a tie, the Board Secretary shall conduct the runoff election via a roll call in which each Board Member may only vote in favor of one of the remaining candidates. Officers shall serve for one year, and until their respective successors are elected and shall qualify, but if the Board shall fail to hold a reorganization meeting, or to elect Board Members as prescribed by NJSA 18A:15-1, the Executive County Superintendent shall appoint from among the Members of the Board a President and/or Vice President. In the event of vacancy in the position of Board President, the Vice President shall act in the capacity of President until a new President is duly elected by a full membership to Board, or appointed by the Executive County Superintendent as set forth above. The Vice President shall not have an automatic right of succession in the event of a vacancy in the office of the President. Moving on, I would like to take nominations for the President of the Olbridge Township Board of Education.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Kelly Ellis Foster for President.
Is the nomination and motion okay, or is it somebody else has to make the motion? He made it, he did the nomination and the motion. He's good? Okay, and that is, that's the motion. Are there any other nominations? Since there are no other nominations, I will take a roll call vote. Burns?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
The votes are nine to one. Kelly Ellis Foster is the new President. Congratulations.
Well, first, I'd just like to thank everybody, and I appreciate everyone's support. It's going to be another fun and interesting year, so I think, I'm just very happy to be part of this group of people. And I'd like to thank Jill for her leadership, and I know she will be just as strong even though she's over to my left here, so thank you. So now, we will open up nominations for Vice President. Do we have any nominations?
Madam President, I'll make a nomination.
Yes, sir.
That will be Jill DeCaro for Vice President.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? No? All right, seeing none, roll call?
Burns?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
The vote is nine zero. Ms. Jill DeCaro is the Vice President.
This is the first time in 50 years involved in Olbridge School System that there was a nine-nine on both sides. There was always some kind of opposition. Congratulations to the two of you.
All right, well, thank you, and I think it's a testament to this Board that we have now, so thanks, everyone. So we will move now to finance. If somebody can move number one through three?
Then we'll move items one through three, Madam President.
Have a second?
Lent will second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I will fill in, the Board Secretary will fill in the blanks with the new President.
Oh, oh, number three.
Yes, we also may have some documents here for you to put your signature on tonight.
I'll be here. All right, thank you. So roll call?
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Wrong names. Oops. Let's try it again. Let's start from scratch. Burns?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services, one through two. Can I have a motion?
Caro, a motion?
Lent will second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Burns?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Resolution one and two pass.
Thank you. Board Secretary and Board Business, one and two?
Lent will move it.
Thank you. Second?
Caro will second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, annually, once a year, I'm required to read at a public Board meeting, the Code of Ethics, and each Board Member is required to sign off that they've had the opportunity to hear the Code of Ethics, and also address any questions about any of the provisions in the Code of Ethics to Mr. Parton, the Board Attorney. So I will begin to read the Code of Ethics that all Board Members must comply with during their term. One, uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Number two, make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Number three, confine his or her Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and help to frame policy and plans only after the Board has consulted with those who have been affected by them. Number four, carry out his or her responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with fellow Board Members, ensure that they are well-run. Number five, recognize that the authority rests with the Board of Education, and make no personal promises, nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. And number six, refuse to surrender his or her independent judgment to special interest or partisan political groups, or to use schools for personal gain, or for the gains of their friends. Number seven, hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, he or she will provide accurate information, and in concert with fellow Board Members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. Number eight, vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available, after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief School Administrator. Number nine, support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. And number 10, refer all complaints to the Chief School Administrative Officer, and act on complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. So those are the stipulations in the Code of Ethics for each Board Member. If any Board Member has any questions, I would ask you to direct them to Board Counsel, Mr. Christopher Parton. Thank you.
So, just wondering about the last one, refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer, and things of that nature. How does that work with the support groups that we have in town?
Support groups meaning, like PTOs, et cetera?
No, we have the special education for autism and just general IEPs in town, so if one of us were to attend, if we needed it, how would that, would that conflict, or?
It would not conflict.
Okay.
You are eligible to be even a leader of a parent group, as long as, if there is any sort of conflict, like the payment of money, for example, to one of those groups, you abstain as a Board Member, because you can't be paying yourself. That's frowned upon. But, any type of ethical question that comes up like that, ask as we go. Oftentimes, you'll have seen over the last couple of years, that Board Members abstain at certain times, so if you were wondering, feel free to ask, and we'll talk about it before the meeting.
Any other comments? Right, Mr. Mayor?
Just one other comment in reference to the schedule of meetings. This schedule is reflecting a change in the June dates. As a result of the graduation dates, we were required to change them, so we're changing those dates to June 18th and June 30th. And if there is, if there is a change in the method by which the budget is approved, we should know by next Tuesday, and the dates for the calendar will be changed to reflect the new budget calendar that's required by state statute. Burns?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Solakowski? Resolution one and two pass.
Okay, now, hearing of residents on any school district item? Okay? Any old business?
Yes, Ms. Ellis Foster, under old business, we, when we prepared the district and Board Goals this year, we selected January 18th, I believe, for the Board Retreat, which is a very good process, especially for new Board Members. That date is still locked in with a representative from New Jersey School Boards, Marion Friedman. She has supplied me with a list of potential items to be discussed at the retreat. It's a Saturday morning retreat, it's approximately three hours. I will provide you with that list after the meeting, and you can reach out to Ms. Friedman to determine what, what should be done during that retreat.
Anybody else? Any new business?
I'd like to say something, please. Callie?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Singh, Mr. Reed, if you're watching, thank you for your years of service. We will miss you. Ms. Callie, Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Burns, welcome. I look forward to working with you three. And I'm going to go off script for one second and embarrass somebody. I'd like to wish a happy birthday to one of our cameramen who's always here, Aiden Eisenberg. Happy birthday.
Madam President? I would like to say a few words as well. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Giordano, Ms. Burns, and Ms. Callie for being re-elected to the Board of Education. This is a very important body to this township, and we are going to work collaboratively together to ensure the betterment of this district. And that's what this goal is. This Board is empowered to worry about our educational enrichment, and we're going to continue that. And I can see that we're going to have a very good year, because I want to congratulate Kelly Ellis Foster for being named President. I believe that we're going to be in good hands. She's going to follow in the footsteps of Ms. Jill Callie, who did such a superb job as President last year. There were a lot of trials and tribulations that we overcame, and we're a stronger district because of her leadership. And I'm looking at the same now with Ms. Kelly Ellis Foster. I'm sure that you'll follow in her footsteps and make sure that we get over all the hills that are confronting us today. Also, Jill DeCaro, you've been a very good Board Member. You deserve being Vice President. I'm looking forward to your leadership as well, working hand in hand with the President to ensure that this Board has the leadership that's necessary to overcome any obstacle that may be in our path. So congratulations.
I apologize, I forgot to congratulate Kelly and Jill.
I know.
I too want to congratulate Jill DeCaro on her becoming Vice President. And Kelly, it was a pleasure. I think we changed the way we do things. It was, it wasn't President and Vice President, it was really, you know, the two of us together all the time, most of the time in the car, during my ride to work. But anyway, congratulations, Kelly. And you know I'm here for you if you have any questions, ever need. Um, and you know I'm here for you if you have any questions, ever need anything. Yes, I know.
I, you know, this, the same as everybody, but I would feel, be remiss if I didn't say congratulations to, uh, you know, Sal and Teresa, welcome, and, uh, you know, look forward to working with you, um, this, uh, the next couple of years. I don't, you know, however long. And, um, Jill, glad to have you back. And, uh, Kelly, you're gonna do great, just like, you know, following Jill's footsteps. Again, I'm just repeating what everybody said, but just wanted to get my voice out there. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I believe, uh, we are going into an executive session?
Yes, we're, need a motion for executive session for discussions of Old Bridge Education Association negotiations, uh, some property issues, the school election, and vendor contracts.
I'll make a motion as stated by our General Counsel or our Board Pres, uh, Counsel.
Second it? And we will not be coming back. Okay, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Go on, favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we're going into executive session.